Hello and welcome to Spotlight on New London. My name is Akil Peck, I'm New London City Councilor. And today I am joined with the one and only Director of Recreation, Mr. Josh Posey.
Hello, hello councillor and thank you so much for having me here today. I'm super excited to talk to you guys today.
Let's get straight into this here. You know, I'm glad that we're able to have this time to sit down. You know, there's a lot going on in New London. There's a lot going on with the Recreation Department. So really quick, let's just start off with the big picture. What's the mission with New London Rec Department?
Well, I would say our, first of all, great question. And so our bigger picture is to connect the community with resources, right? The New London Recreation is a wonderful organization in the state of New London that allows us to give access to our New London residents, right? We've got a lot of different grants that we've been writing and a lot of fun, exciting things that I'll tell you about as we move on in the segment. But I'm super excited to share that we are still nationally accredited. And so that kind of is the bigger picture as a whole. And when I talk about national accreditation, we have a CAPRA standard. It's called the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. So what that means is we strive at excellence over at New London Recreation. We're one of the only accredited recreation departments in the state and one of few in New England. So as far as the big picture is concerned, we're here to continue to connect the community with resources and, you know, make sure that Mayor Pastrow, you know, is ready to hop in the pool at the Community Center when it's time to get that going.
Well, you're getting ahead of us here. We didn't get to that part of the segment where we're talking about the Community Center. But thank you for highlighting that because that is, that is one of the great things that myself as a councillor and as a New London native, I'm very proud of. And proud of working with some great talented city councillors. President Dominguez, John Sadi, Jeff Hart, Almane Tartez, Ariel De Dice, you know, and just Jocelyn Rosario. Just a wonderful group of individuals that we all share the same, the same goal, to offer a lot for our youth. So really quick, what are some of the key accomplishments from the past that you're mostly, you know, proud of?
Well, I guess I'll start by just acknowledging the wonderful staff that we have in New London Recreation. So those of you who don't know, we have two divisions in Recreation. There's the Recreation Division, then there's the Youth Affairs Division. And let me just name off a few of those folks in that department because I just want to make sure I acknowledge them. We've got Sharon Busquets, we've got Sally Brennan, Tom Padeswa, we've got Tara Handford, Lori DeLuca, Zach Morales. Those make up that Recreation side of things. And then Youth Affairs, we've got Ellen Kleckner, Tina Salcedo, Cindy Alvarez, Rihanna Rubino, Gail Palladino, Deborah Sargent, Nicole Broaddus, Margaret Lancaster, Jenny Alvarez, Maria Cortial, and Estefani Cruz. So it's a big division of folks who help us day to day to bring things for the city of New London. So some of the things that I'm very proud of with that department, there's so many accomplishments that, that we've done this year, in this past year. One of them I wanted to highlight, Tom Padeswa, he's our aquatics coordinator. He has been just on the road, over 100 folks certified in first aid and CPR. So he's, he's been doing a great job trying to spread that safety because one of our missions in, in New London Recreation is the safety of our, of our constituents in our programs. So we want to make sure that not just our residents are safe, but people outside of New London as well can come and get training with us. We're not just, just located just in, in our city. Another cool accomplishment is Sharon and myself have been putting together some grants, right? And, you know, a lot of the times when we're working on these grants, they could take a lot of time. So I give credit to Sharon because she's the Assistant Director of Recreation. We were awarded two grants. One of them was a Musco Lighting Grant. And that one is a pretty cool grant because what that is doing for us is it's taking the time to get some surveys out to the community. And we're going to be working with different partners throughout New London. So we, we work with New London Little League, New London Youth Football, New London Babe Ruth, and New London Soccer, right? And we're trying to locate, figure out really why we're not seeing as many participants signing up for our programs the last, these last couple of years. Obviously, we could say things like COVID, right, could be a reason. But for us, we want to get down to the nitty gritty, right? What, what is it going to take for us to get more participants back into our sports? So what this grant is allowing us to do is giving us some funding to, we have some wonderful Con College interns who have been helping us out and doing a great job and getting us out, getting out their boots on the ground to talk to residents, finding out a little bit more about how we can bring in more, more participants. With that said, the other section of that grant is going to allow us to put in a mini pitch field down at Fulton Park. Working with Brian Seer and Steve Lee and the folks over at Public Works, who have been really excited about doing that because what that mini pitch is going to do is it's got a small little field where you can, in addition to the skate park and to the basketball court, we'll be able to, to put in soccer. It comes with soccer goals, it's multi-purpose use, practices maybe could be on there. So we're really excited about that mini pitch field. The second thing I'm proud of is we've got the Coaches, a Coaches Grant. It's a million coaches grant. And what that's really providing us with is we're, we're going to send more of a positive coaching message out there to some of these coaches we have, not just in New London, but it's going to be open to folks who are interested. We were given some grant money to put on a, just really just a program for the coaches to come together and learn from an actual person, professional, who will come down and teach them more about positive coaching and how we can kind of really connect with our youth. So those two grants are what we're, I'm really proud of. You know, the fact that New London Recreation is in a really good spot to move into this new Community Center and also that we're maintaining our CAPRA standards, our accreditation, which is so much work. So again, I gotta give a plug to the, the crew over at New London Recreation because it's a lot of work to get that stuff done.
And I'm happy you, you highlighted on a lot of that. But I just want to rewind because you unpacked a lot, is the fact that the Rec Department is still, you know, at the forefront of teaching our kids how to swim. Because living by the shore is important, that our kids know how to swim. I remember myself as being a New London native, going to Ocean Beach and going into the pool every summer and learning how to swim. I didn't quite make it to lifeguard level. You know, I, I still can doggy paddle and anything like that. But, but I had my own struggles with, with learning how to swim. And I think it was just the fact that the Rec Department was there in that time, providing that service for kids back when I was growing up in New London. It was just, was just awesome. The old Tommy Major, you know, his department, when, when he was the director at the time.
Was the diving board still there?
The diving board was still there back in the day, believe it or not. But, and I have stories, but we don't have enough time for that. I almost had an incident and almost drowned in that pool. Actually, to be honest with you, my sister saved me. Thankfully, she did that. But, but yeah, so learning how to swim is, is very important for our kids and the community. So, you know, I'm glad that we still have this. And I know that there's some times that we offer free swimming lessons. My kids, both my kids have, you know, were enrolled in the summer swimming. My, my daughter made it all the way to lifeguard. My son, you know, he struggled a little bit. You know, he's better than what he started off. But the main thing is, is being comfortable in the water and knowing how to get out safely in tread water. But, but I know that Youth Affairs is very much a part of the team. And you named a lot of great individuals and they're all great. Cindy's great, Deb, she's amazing with the kids. You know, Ms., you know, Ms. Lancaster, she's also brings her skill set. So you have a phenomenal group of people, you know, and I'm very happy to, to have them there.
Thank you.
But, but so real quick, so I know that Youth Affairs is a part. But if you can shed some light on how are they a part of the Rec Department? Like what role do they play with the Rec Department?
Well, the, the summer, and I want to make a plug for us right now because our summer program guide is coming out soon. And so in that guide, there's a lot of information about, you know, the, what the New London Youth Affairs provides. Some of the things that I just want to highlight, you know, that we do parent leadership programs. Ms. Maria helps with that. One of the, one of the major ones we're working on right now, it's ongoing, is our Connecticut Youth Employment and Training Program. That one is usually all hands on deck. That one provides short-term summer and school year employment. It's a career pipeline for opportunities as well as long-term employment training. Now, it's for the ages of 14 to 24 years old. So what that means is those kids actually can get up to a certain amount of hours in the summer where they are getting paid to go out to different businesses, local businesses, or anywhere from as far as the Guard Arts Theater all the way down to Mystic Seaport. So it's a really powerful thing that these kids are able to do with, with my Youth Affairs staff. And so our staff are the ones who are encouraging them to continue with this journey and also are really just kind of keeping an eye on, making sure that they're staying in line. And they do a great job of that. Other things that, that Youth Affairs does is we have an Early Childhood Family Center. Ms. Tina Salcedo helps run that program with Rihanna Rubino, who do a, do a great job, who have been receiving some grants as well. So nice job on that, by the way. So they, they basically are connecting, they have resources that they provide for the children, ages from birth to three, mostly that age range. One of the things that I always highlight is they offer a support to the parents who may not know where to turn sometimes, right? They, they, they have this, this, this newborn child that they're not 100% sure, right? There's, they always say there's no real book out there. But what, what Tina and her team bring is experience. And they can help them if they have any questions. She provides workshops, health, mental health support, and anything that they might need and services and connecting those kids. So that's another really good program that's been running through through Youth Affairs. And the last thing is Diaper Bank, right? We have a diaper bank that sounds like it's really just about giving out diapers, but really essentially it is giving diapers out. But they also connect parents with resources and families come in and, and, and we offer those because a lot of families have a hard time affording a lot of this stuff with the rising cost of food and, and different things. So it's nice to be able to help provide that. We have a grant that ships these diapers in. And families, they have to just sign up and, and we organize everything. And we, we provide them with, with diapers and any services they might need.
Yeah, I just think it's great. I've witnessed what you've done over there and what everyone has done. And the Diaper Bank is especially something that I think is very, is very nice because as you stated, the high cost of groceries and different things. Diapers, you know, having two kids, my wife and I, it's, that was always, you know, one of the things that you could not go without. I mean, you can't go without diapers, you know, for the little ones. So, and diapers are expensive. So offering that, that service is just phenomenal. I think it's just great what you guys are doing. And you touched on the summer program with the jobs. I think I have been there just about, since I've been a city councillor, I've been there just about every, every summer for the opening ceremony or opening, opening day, if you will, when they go through.
Send you that date, yeah, it's coming up.
Yes, yes, and it's exciting. I get excited every summer because just the look on these kids' face. Because, I mean, kids as young as 14, this is their first job. So they're coming in, they're learning about how to set up a bank account. They're learning about how to budget their money. They're, they're learning all these great things, not just the fact that they're getting a job, as you named, the Guard Arts Center, which is a great partner. I know there's a lot of local grocery stores and restaurants that these kids have the opportunity to, to go out and gain good employment. But I just really get energized when I go there in the, in the summer for the opening day and just the, the faces of these young kids, they're ready to go. They're excited about working. And, and so that's great.
And there's usually like 300 kids, we were just talking about this morning, that there could be up to 300 kids in that orientation when they got to break it up into segments. And I, I appreciate you mentioning that because it's always nice to have you and the council down there because they really look up to you guys. So I appreciate you guys.
And I believe President Dominguez, he's usually there. And then Representative Nolan, sometimes he stops by to some of those things too. So, so it, it just, it just excites me because I remember when I was, you know, growing up, you know, I didn't have that opportunity. I had to wait until I was of age and, you know, and go through the whole thing by, by myself. And as a kid, it's scary, you know, going out and getting an application and going through the interview process and everything like that. But what you guys are doing, it breaks some of that stigma, it breaks some of that fear, it breaks some of that, a lot of that nervousness. The kids get just right into it and they get such a great experience. And it's just life-changing. I see some of the kids come back as camp councillors, they come back and help. At the Guard Arts Center, I still see some of the kids that started with this, with this program and now they're employees of the Guard Arts Center. So that's great. Now here's the biggest thing that everyone is talking about in London. The buzz is going on about the new Community Rec Center. And I just want you to touch on a little bit because I know there's going to be a lot of stuff coming out.
Oh, yeah.
We don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but we just want to just quickly just talk about the Rec Department's role with the new Recreation Center that I've been waiting for for decades. And I'm glad that we're finally at this point. And I'm happy that as a city councillor, that I was able to have my hand in it as far as allocating some of the funding that, that's going to this beautiful facility. You know, there were other councillors before me, before I, before I was elected that had a big hand, you know, Councillor Booker, Councillor Goodwin, Councillor Marks. They were, they were a part of this as well. So I just wanted to mention their name too and give them their appreciation for that. But, but yeah, real quick, if you can.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So I can't even control my excitement when it comes to the Community Center because I've been touring in that place with Felix Reyes. He's the, the head of our ODP. And I've had the honor to tour Congressman Joe Courtney. And we've had just, just tons of folks down there to check the place out. And we're especially excited because New London Recreation is going to be moving over there, right? We're not, we're not, not there yet, we'll, we'll be there soon. So right now, folks can still come visit us at the 111 Union Street address, at Stanton Building. We're still over there. But what's, what's really exciting about it is we've, we've got a community kitchen in there where we're going to be running some of our cooking programs. You know, we've wanted to put in some snack beds over there to do some farm-to-kitchen type of programming over there. So, and, and what's also really exciting is swim lessons, right? We, a lot of our swim lessons are usually over at Avery Point. So now we're going to be able to have them right in our city. So that's really exciting for us. Also, the basketball court, right, it's huge. So when, when you guys get up there to check it out, it's, it's gorgeous. You know, there's going to be six pickleball courts. There's going to be just so much space for us to kind of, just kind of spread out a little bit. One of the things that, you know, I've envisioned for that place is, you know, I think our kids need a place that they feel a sense of stability, right? And I think Judy Milstein had hit on that when we spoke before. It's just about just creating an environment for the kids that they can walk in and feel that this is for them and, and also for the families as well. It's important that they feel that sense of stability. So when they walk in, they talk to our Youth Affairs staff or the Community Center staff that are going to be working there. So again, plenty of space, a lot of inclusive offerings. Our Tina Salcedo's Zero to Three Program, that, that family center, the Early Childhood Center, she'll be up there, she has her own huge classroom that she'll be working out of. So just super excited about, about the move and about the opportunity that is going to be there for the city and the residents. So that's, that's mostly the gist. You know, I think the other part that I'm super excited about is the community room. I, I didn't want to forget the community room because it's, it's a community room. And it's going to have a lot of opportunity for us to invite folks in. There's going to be state-of-the-art equipment, AV and TVs and you name it. You can do a lot out of that room and hoping that my Coaching Alliance program that we're trying to set up with the positive coaching, you know, we'll be able to do that, that grant and accomplish that at that, at that site once we open up. July 1st is still the date for opening. So that is still the date that they're, they're planning on having that soft opening. More to come on that from the Community Center opening, but super excited about that. And then I think one of the last things I wanted to talk about with the Community Center was just the fact that, that again, that community room, we're going to be moving our 10 to 14 summer camp program over there. And that's a big move for us, you know. We had them stationed out at Bates Woods Park. And those of you guys who don't know that place, that New London Recreation, we have pavilions over there at Bates Woods where we rent those, rent those pavilions out, but we have our, one of our camps there. These guys, these kids, these teens, young, young, young kids as well, will have the opportunity to have a brand-new rec center where they'll have more access to swimming lessons this summer. We'll have more access to just different types of physical activity and, and not just physical activity, but we're also going to be having more STEAM and STEM programming going on with some of our partnerships, which we'll, we'll get into in a minute. But again, overall, it's, it's just super exciting that we're going to have this, this opportunity.
Yeah, and, and I'm excited for the Aquatics Center. I know we talked about, a lot about the swimming lessons. You know, the Aquatics Center is huge, you know, it's a, I think it's close to an Olympic size, if I'm not mistaken.
So it's competitive size.
Competitive size, right.
Yeah, so competitive size meaning, well, it has eight lanes, right? And then 25, I believe 25 meters up, one way, up, I believe is the, don't, don't quote me on that. But it is a competitive size. So there could be competitions and swim teams and you name it. There are all sorts of lap swimming for, and aquatic programs for, for seniors. And there's so much that they're going to be able to do out of that thing.
And you talked about the children's room. But I don't think you really highlight the fact that, you know, we had a lot of community input leading up to this. It took years of, of making a lot of input from the kids, from the middle school, I understand, where it had input on this. And Director Reyes did a great job of, of leading it with the mayor, the mayor's office. And I've had many tours, right? So I understand that, that the kids' room, for the little ones, the floors are heated. So the little, little hands and little feet that are going to be crawling around on the floor, they'll be nice and toasty and warm.
It's true.
You know, and so, so I highlight that, the fact that we didn't leave out anything as far as when we were imagining this, this community standard. We were dreaming about it and thinking about it. We thought of everything, and I mean everything. So as the footprint may look a little small on the outside, there's a lot packed inside. We did not share, shed any, any, any bit of, of equality when, when we were thinking about this. So I just really wanted to highlight that, that this is a community rec center that you have never seen before. The views from inside looking over the water are spectacular. And it just gives our kids that are, that are on opposite sides, sides of the small city, just a chance to maybe get over there to, to, to just see, you know, what's over there by, by the beautiful structures with the, with the Fort Trumbull. You know, some kids maybe have never ventured to that little side of, of the city. So this will open up possibilities that they have never dreamed of or thought of. And I'm just super, super excited. I mean, I just really can't wait for the opening day. I know there's going to be a lot of stuff coming out, it's going to be a big celebration, you know. And you already hit on, I was going to ask you, like, what are some of the programs that you're going to be offering inside this beautiful facility? But you just already hit on that. But is there anything that you left out as far as what programs?
Couple things, yeah. You know, we're, it's just things that are in the works. We're trying to, you know, develop more after-school programming for, for the, for the city residents as well. So there may be an opportunity for us to offer some after-school programming. So stay tuned for that. I have to highlight on some of the amenities that I saw. They've got batting cages in the gym, batting cages. That's super exciting. They raise up, raise down, yeah. So folks will be able to, to use those. And wrestling mats also will be coming up and down from the ceiling too. One thing I'm super excited about is whenever I was in my past jobs, we would have to, you know, wind up the basketball goal to go up and down for the kids. From what I'm hearing, I haven't seen it yet, but there'll, there'll be a button to press to put up and down the hoop. So I just, I'm, I'm excited just to have that opportunity to, to, to share that with, with the city.
And you talked a little bit about cooking programs. And I just have to just publicly say this, I love to eat, I love to cook, I have a background in cooking. So, you know, maybe we might have like cooking with, with Chef Councillor Peck, I don't know.
We could have a cook-off, you know.
We might, we might have something there. We might, we might, you know, might have to talk offline and talk about maybe doing something, maybe a cooking class or something like that with, with Chef Peck.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, we want to, we want to make sure that we, I think recipes are passed down through generations. So it's one thing that we were really hoping to instill in that, that kitchen is that, you know, families want to, you know, pass down their generational recipes and cook and, and bring that warm feeling down to that area. I think that, that's what we should do. And all I, all I can say is I could bake chocolate chip cookies, that's all I got. I, I'm hoping to, to learn a little bit more as we open up that kitchen though.
Yeah. So is there anything or what's coming up for the summer? I know, I know that, you know, today's a nice day, but before you know it, we'll be in the heydays of the summer. So I just want to just touch on, if you can just really quickly just let us know some of the exciting things that's coming out of our new Recreation Center, that's coming out of the Rec Department, you know, what is Youth Affairs have going on for the summer. So that way we can get people engaged and excited, because I know I'm excited. I mean, this winter wasn't that bad. It wasn't that bad.
Wasn't too bad.
It wasn't too bad. We didn't have too many snow days, but I just really love the summers in New London. I don't think there's any better place to be than, than in New London in the summertime with the Ocean Beach Park, you know, with all the great things to do along the water. So just really quick.
Sure, yeah, of course, thank you. There's so much going on this summer. So if I, if I could pack it all into just a couple of minutes, one of the ones I really want to highlight, our Rec Mobile, right? We have a Rec Mobile that, it's a free summer program. We know that some parents and families, you know, can't necessarily make it out to summer camp. So what we provided is a Rec Mobile. And you, I'm sure you guys have seen it, we've had it in multiple parades, our St. Patrick's Day Parade. So basically what you could do is you can come visit us in the summer and participate in arts and crafts activities, yard games, cooking, fitness activities, and more, really. So basically that, that mobile van will park at different parks throughout the city. Some of them would be, we are going to be at Winthrop Square. That's a, that's a, the apartment complex next door. We'll be providing that there. Green Harbor, it'll be over there as well. And Toby May Park. So there'll be, there'll be various areas that the Rec will be, will be stationed at. And you'll be able to locate that. Once our summer guide comes out, you'll be able to kind of read up and find out where, where it will be. But it'll be coming near you, I promise.
Now, they can find all this information on your website, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely, from New London Recreation website. So another, another, another program that we're offering this summer, obviously, is, we've got so much, again, and I don't want to highlight everything that's in our summer guide, but, because I don't want to spoil it. But we've got theater camps coming up, soccer and swim camp is coming back again this year. We're also partnering with New England Science and Sailing, NESTS, we've got a mobile classroom that's powered by New London. So that mobile classroom will be coming out to our summer camps and where kids can learn different science projects and they can, it's, it's, sky's the limit, honestly. It's, it's pretty decked out. We're supposed to be going and checking it out soon. Again, I don't want to spoil anything from that, but that's a big surprise that's coming up. But that's going to be exciting to be able to share that with the, with the, the summer camp kids and, and the families that are coming out to our programs.
And I'm glad that you're, that you're a partner with NESTS because they're a great organization, they, they do great work. And I think this is great to get the kids of New London outside of their comfort zone and get them on a vessel and get them out there on the, on the Thames River and get them to learn how to sail. I, I think once they get that sense of something new and adventurous, you just never know the possibilities that, that they may open up as far as, you know, goals that they may look at that they didn't really think of necessarily before. Because, you know, summer, when we hit summer, we shouldn't stop learning. You know, that's something that we should keep going and keep, you know, learning new things and building on. So that's why it's important that you're, you know, engaging with the youth of New London and bringing out programs that are, that are teaching them. They may not know it while they're having fun.
That's what I tell my kids, I try not to tell them, but they're learning. They're learning, you know, and they don't realize it.
Yeah, so that's important.
Yeah.
That's very important.
And then the, one of the last things I have to highlight because this is coming up this weekend. We've got a 5K Brew Run that we're going to be doing down with, we partnered with Tox Brewing Company. Their amazing pizza and, and they're located right down on Bank Street. So what we're doing is our dream was to do a 5K Brew Run. So we partnered with them and we've got various partners who have supported us. So thank you for all our support and our sponsorships that have come through for this race. It's going to start and stop down at, down at, on Bank Street, right by Tox.
So it's going to start at Tox?
Yeah.
And it's going to loop around and end at Tox?
Correct, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we worked really hard on, on making that happen. And thank you to the London Police Department for helping us with that, Chief Wright and his crew and, and Mr., I think it's Sergeant Dustin, I think his name is, sorry if I got your name wrong. But we worked hard to get that going. So we're super excited about that 5K because it also has a Root Beer Run for the kids. It's one mile. So if any kids who, who want to run, it's a one-mile run, that's a part of this race. Also going to be downtown as well. We want to bring more things, exciting things back to that, to Bank Street and downtown. We, the Rec Department used to do a lot of races. We, the rec department used to do a lot of races, do athlons, you name it, you know, before COVID and, and we haven't gotten into that. So one of the things that we've been challenged with is to, to bring some of that stuff back. I think, I think the city's ready and deserves to, to see what great programming we can offer.
You know, you know, real quick, I don't want to cut you off. You know what I would like to see? I, I've seen on TV some of the, the duck, the, the rubber duck.
The duck race, yes.
The duck race.
Yes, I know about it.
Could we try to do that here in the Thames River? Because I could see, you know, all the little, you know, different colored ducks just floating through. You know, hopefully it's, it's safe for our environment, but I just always thought.
I don't know if you've been down to one of those, I've been.
I have it.
They're fun, and they have it so nicely set up where they, the ducks all collected to a little area, they off to the side, and it gets all collected. So we'd have to, we'd have to figure out a way to make that work, but I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's a way. We'd have to just, I, I wouldn't want to take the name, but hey, let's, let's work together on that, I think it'd be fun.
Let's try to do that, I mean.
Because they pull the winners, you know, have you seen that? They pull, they pull the winners out of the ducks. And I've tried every year to, to put in for a couple of ducks. I haven't won the trip, I think a trip to Disney yet, but I've been trying to win that trip for years, but it's such a fun, cool, cool thing, so yeah.
But real quick, you know, Tox Brewing, you know, has been in New London for a long time and they could have chosen anywhere else to, to lay their roots. And we, New London is very proud and happy to have Tox, our first brewing company in the city. So I'm just happy that they're, that they're partnering with you and that they're doing this run. So what time does it start and what time does it end? And how people can find out more information, is there a website or a number?
I mean, you guys can absolutely reach out to our, our front, our front office at the New London Recreation for more information, call me directly. So it starts at 9:30, that's the one-mile run. And I believe abruptly after the one-mile, at 10 o'clock will be the 5K. So, and then after that, you know, we don't, typically they don't last more than an hour, an hour and a half, but we want them to be redirected over to Tox, right? So Tox is gonna provide a, a ticket for pizza and a, and a drink for folks who are signed up for that program. So again, great partnership, excited about that. If you haven't tried their pizza, it's delicious. I brought my kids and my family there before. So 9:30, one mile, and 10 o'clock will be the 5K.
And what day?
Oh, good question, May 3rd.
May 3rd.
Which is this Saturday. Yeah, so it's not too late to sign up. You also can come as you are during that day, just, just come right in the morning and you can register onsite. You don't have to register, pre-register, although we would love it if you did pre-register. But yeah, please just show up on Saturday, you don't think you, it's too late, it's never too late to sign up.
And it'd be great if, even if you don't want to partake in the race, just to be there as a spectator, I think is good, to cheer on the people, I think is, is important. So, you know, hopefully this airs in time. People can, you know, plan accordingly and come down to the city because there's just a lot of new, different things happening in the city. And I just want people to just see it for themselves and not just hear about it afterwards or see it on social media.
Oh, and volunteers too. So if, if, if anyone is interested in, we always use extra volunteers. We want to put someone at every single corner, just to, just to keep, again, you know, New London Rec, all about safety. So in conjunction with the New London Police Department and with Public Works, we, we're gonna make sure that everything's coned off and sectioned off. But we always could use extra volunteers down there to help us out too. So if you don't want to run or walk, again, it's inclusive, you don't, you don't have to run. If you don't want, you can walk. But if you don't want to do that, you can always volunteer and help us out.
All right, but, but you've built a lot of partnerships, you know, with so many different groups and organizations. Can you just, just touch on what you can say that, that you can, that you can offer or that they offer, you know, with some of these partnerships?
Sure, yeah, so mainly the partnerships that we're working with right now. Again, one of the big ones that we highlighted was working with NEST, New England Science and Sailing. They're, they're wonderful to work with. Right now, again, with the mobile classroom, we're kind of moving them into, to working with us all the summer. They're, they're still going to be offering sailing lessons to, to our kids and to the residents as well. They also have a, a plug in there where they will also offer to be open to the public as well. So more, more on that as we move on to, but you can always look us up on our website for that. We also work with the schools, I, I definitely want to highlight that. It's a great partnership, you know, folks over at the school system are, are, are helpful with us. We, we do use the schools during the year for various activities that we run. So and, you know, Miguel, who's the operations guy with the, with, with the London Board of Ed, really great partnership that we work with them. I also don't want to forget that we have a recreation commission who we, I, I lean on for a lot of things. And, you know, our, our chairs are Donna Bailey and Norman Harrison, just really great group of folks who are part of that rec commission. I don't want to leave them out because they are the ones who meet the first Wednesday of every month to okay different parties that might be coming in the city, people with new ideas. They're the ones who make sure that the city residents are getting what they requested. And they also keep me in line too, right? So I appreciate them and, again, that's, that's a partnership that, that would also be a part of us as well.
Well, you named someone that's, that's near and dear to my heart, Donna Bailey. She's a New London native and she's someone that always gives to all these kids and she loves them like they're her own.
Yes.
And I've seen her in action, so, you know, you have some great members on your committee. So I'm glad, you know, because that speaks highly of the level of care that we have in the city, how we really, you know, welcome everybody and, and we really, we really try, try to tend to, to kind of make everyone feel like they're part of the family.
Right.
And I think that, that's what I notice is that everyone, makes everyone feel like they're part of the family. Whether you've been there for a long time, whether you were born there, whether you, you know, implanted from another town or city, but once, once you've laid your roots down in New London, we really do welcome everybody and, and show them that, that it's all about family. So what is, this is a, this is a loaded question.
Okay.
What is your vision for the future for the rec department? Like, where do you see, where do you see it going? I know with the new rec, with the new rec center, you're gonna have more, you know, availability for space. But really, where do you see it?
Well, I, I think where, where I see us is obviously getting re-accredited again with those CAPRA standards. It's a lot of work to continue keeping that accreditation going. So that's part of our future, is staying accredited and being the only nationally accredited rec department in the, in the state. Hoping more folks will hop on and, and become accredited as well, but it is quite the process. And so one of the things that I, I know for sure is, once we move into the new community center, you know, we're, we're excited about offering again a safe space for our youth and our families. I know I talked a little about in the beginning about having that sense of stability in, in, for our kids. So again, when they walk into that, to that community center and they come visit us in the rec department, really feel in a sense of stability that, you know, this is, this is home, this is comfort for them. And they could really lean on us, the families and the youth for whatever their needs may be. Going back to that mission of, of connecting the city residents with resources, we're, that's, that's our role and our job and we're continuing to do that. And again, I just want to, I always talk about how this has been like a dream job for me growing up. I, so I just want to, again, thank my family and, and, and my friends and those who have kind of gotten me here because without them, I wouldn't be here and, and be allowed to speak with someone like yourself, Mr. Peck. But again, Mayor Pasrow again as well, thank you as well for bringing me on as well because you are someone who has been someone that's been very helpful to me. And just, just looking into the future, looking forward to doing a cannonball in that community center pool. So we'll see, I don't know, it might be a big splash, I, I don't know, we'll see. But looking forward to that. And so again, that's, that's kind of the future for us, is just maintaining our accreditation and continuing to be a resource for the, for the city residents.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you're here on this, on the show and we're spotlighting some of the great things that's happening at the, at the new rec center that's coming and what's going on right now at the, the rec department. So I'm just very happy that you highlighted a lot. I mean, we'll be back again to talk more, but, but I'm just thankful for you and all of your staff. You have some great, great individuals that are working with you and you can't do it alone because there's just so many parks and just so many things going on, so many moving parts. But, but thank you once again for, for, for coming here today and sharing about what's going on in New London. You know, I mean, this little spotlight was just great, so we'll be back again. So for those of you who are watching at home, you know, please reach out to either myself, New London City Councilor, Mr. Peck, or Director Posey. You know, the website is, is listed on, on the city's website and you can find a lot of great information on the city's website. So thank you again.
Thank you too.
And I'll turn it over to you.
So, yeah, again, you know, I guess the last thing I'll say is, you know, we're, we're not just running programs, we are building community. Thank you guys again, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you all.